One, the meeting is called to order. Moon, will you please call the roll?
Mr. Barca?
Present.
Ms. Cortez?
Here.
Dr. Jones?
Present.
Here.
Mr. Hogan?
Here. Thank you. All right, so just a quick modification to our agenda. Under section, I guess it would be B four C, we'll do ad hoc committee reports instead of assignments, and we'll strike the summary introducing the committees. So can I get a motion to approve the agenda as amended?
Some of.
Second.
Mr. Barca?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner? Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Wolfsee?
Yes.
Yes. All right, the agenda is approved. Well, we'll start tonight off with public comments, and we will start with Mr. Fred Steiner. Mr. Steiner, are you here? Nope, okay. All right, well then we will move right into Mr. Ron Carter from Moore Square. Welcome, sir. And you'll have three minutes.
Good evening. My name is Ron Carter, and I'm with the Education Task Force with the Metro Organization for Racial and Economic Equity, known as Moore Square. We've been working with the previous board on addressing the issue of school suspensions and expulsions in the district. First, let me welcome your newest members, Mrs. Buckner and Mrs. Ford, to the board and say we look forward to working with you. Last month, Dr. Willey and her team gave a presentation recommending the district, starting with the 2223 school year, adopt a policy to ban suspensions and expulsions pre-K through fifth grade, except in cases of conduct on school grounds that is of a violent or sexual nature that endangers the student or the other persons. I'm here to discuss why we feel this recommendation should be approved and adopted. The purpose of Kansas City Public Schools is to provide a quality education that prepares all our students, regardless of background or circumstances, for success in college, career, and life. A big part of fulfilling that purpose is to have the students in the classroom, whether in person or online. Students cannot learn if they are not in the classroom, and when a young student misbehaves, the appropriate response should be to teach the desired behavior, not to punish the student. We think the district's focus should be one that set our young students up for success rather than failure. Suspension of a child in kindergarten generally predicts another suspension of that child one to three years later. Some kindergarters suspended from school struggle to reverse the trend in their academic life that that suspension may create. Our district is 90% non-white, and boys and African-American students are more likely to be suspended than girls and white students respectively. Research shows suspension and expulsion can have a negative impact on young children and their families. Children of color are disproportionately impacted by suspension and expulsion. One of the most commonly cited statistics from the U.S. Department of Education's Office of Civil Rights Report found that black children make up 18% of preschool enrollment, but 48% of preschool children suspended more than once. To be clear, research and data show that removing children from school and keeping them away from an educational environment can be very harmful. A common thread in the research is that banning expulsions and suspensions are a critical step in improving the aspects of childhood education, but it's just a step. Other steps include reworking of disciplinary policies and practices, including introduction of restorative practices and comprehensive social-emotional learning and other programs. The Kansas City School District is already doing many of these things, better disciplinary practices, instituting restorative practices in some of the schools, more training of classroom management for teachers, developing trauma-informed schools, and expanded mental health services in the most disadvantaged schools in the district. Through the leadership and guidance of Dr. Bedell and his staff and the school board, great progress has been made toward providing a quality education that prepares all of our students, regardless of background or circumstances, for success in college, career, and life. Without a doubt, banning expulsion and suspension of students pre-K through fifth grade is a positive step that will promote success for our students. Moore Square is in favor of Dr. Willey's recommendation and strongly encourage you to approve it and adopt it when you vote on it in May. Thank you for your time and consideration.
Thank you, Mr. Carter. We'll ask, is Mr. Fred Steiner here? Give him one more opportunity. No? Okay. We'll move on to our District Advisory Committee or Council Report. Mr. Demonte Rochester, are you here? No? Okay. We'll move on to the Student District Advisory Council Report and have Nadia Richard and, is it? Nadia and Verena? Yeah. Come on up to the podium. Ah, okay. Very cool. Well, you'll have six minutes. Welcome.
Can everyone hear me? Awesome. So hello and welcome, board members, old and new, and all the district families who have joined us today. My name is Nadia Richard. I'm a sophomore from Lincoln College Prep, and I am a member of ESTAC, have been for two years now. So for those of you who do not know, ESTAC stands for Student District Advisory Council and serves to recognize student-centered issues, both in the individual schools that we represent, as well as district-wide issues, and work together as student members of this district to find solutions and implement them for these issues. Our team is made up of 15 to 20 students, both from Lincoln, East, Southeast, and Northeast. So as I mentioned, I've been a member of ESTAC for about two years now. I hope to continue to serve my school and public community by serving on the council for the rest of my high school career, preferably not on Microsoft Zooms, but we'll get there, I think. So this last year, ESTAC identified key issues present in both our individual schools and throughout the district. We focused on a center issue and worked to create a solution for it. While we weren't able to implement that solution, thank you, global pandemic, we have, over this last year, continued to reexamine the issues we mentioned this past year and work to amplify the student voice. To kind of elaborate on the work that ESTAC has been doing for the past year, I'll pass it over to another member of this council.
Hello and good evening. My name is Verena M., and I'm currently a sophomore at Lincoln College Prep. This is my first year of ESTAC, and I've really enjoyed the opportunity to problem-solve issues our district faces, affect change across the district, and help represent the voices of students within our community. During the semester, the members of ESTAC have worked diligently to provide feedback and solutions on a variety of matters. We thoroughly discussed the KCPS Back-to-School Plan and shared our opinions and concerns. We also provided possible solutions to those concerns and discussed how to make the transition into hybrid learning as safe and painless as possible while fostering an effective learning environment. We also reviewed the Blueprint 2030 Plan and provided feedback through a website called Thought Exchange. On that same note, my peers and I catapulted the Thought Exchange link for the Blueprint 2030 Plan in order to gather feedback from a wide array of students. Our attempts to receive a great deal of feedback on the 2030 Plan were extremely successful. ESTAC has worked very hard this semester to provide district-wide solutions for students within our community. We look forward to continuing our partnership with the district to amplify the student voice and to utilize our problem-solving and critical-thinking skills in a significant way. Thank you.
That was great, thank you. All right, well, we'll move right into our Board of Directors' report and... What's that? Okay. We'll move right into a Board Chair Announcement. So for, really for the community's purposes, because we've talked about this, or I have directly with our board members. But one of the, one of the things that, that we've looked at is, if you think about our normal board meeting structure, we would have our executive session at 4:30, and then we would move into our general session at 6:30. And at 4:30, we would have, we would have both open and closed items discussed during executive session. And so, as a result, one of the things that I think is a barrier for our community is for them to be able to actually participate and engage with this board during that executive session. And if you're starting at 4:30, most people don't have the flexibility, right, to, to get off of work, get home, log in if it's live-streamed, or come here in person at 4:30. And so, in an effort to really kind of increase the ability for our community to participate in the board meetings, we want to sort of go into executive sessions starting at 5:30, and we'll do primarily just closed items within that executive session at 5:30, and we'll continue to keep our general session at 6:30. So the primary reason for this, as I mentioned, was to really try to remove any barriers that we can for the community to engage directly with this board. And so this is a first step. The other thing that I think it will help do as well is to make sure that board members have the ability to get here on time. You know, folks are rushing. Again, not everyone has the same level of flexibility. So being able to start at 5:30 versus 4:30 should hopefully increase our ability to get here on time as well. And then, you know, there's, there's opportunities for future work here. So Rita or Ms. Cortez and I had a good conversation last night around some of the work and conversations that the Community Engagement and Communications Committee has been working on in terms of just engaging the public. And public comment is a great example of this, right? Where we don't really engage. It's someone comes up to a podium, they speak for three minutes, and then they go about their evening. Well, there's not a whole lot of engagement there. There are reasons for the rules to be set up the way that they are. I mean, you think about a public institution, if you just allow everyone to come up and speak as long as they want to, and then we have a back-and-forth, it, it could end up being quite a long night, for sure. And so, we're going to get creative. My ask of the, the new Communications and Community Engagement Committee is that we try to get creative around creating opportunities to engage directly in our public where it's a bidirectional engagement, not just someone stepping up to a podium and having a conversation by themselves. So this will go into effect at our next board meeting, which is May 12. We'll start at 5:30 and go until 6:30 for executive session. That executive session will be primarily closed. We will have board member voice, which is a 15-minute standing item on our executive session, but the other 45 minutes will be for closed items. And we'll do that in the Westport Room. And then from 6:30 on, just like we have it today, we'll start with general session. So we'll move all of our open items essentially into the general session, starting at 6:30. It will require us to be really sort of focused on our presentations and keeping them succinct while not sort of preventing people from having robust conversation, because that's not the intent. And we certainly don't want, you know, Dr. Bedell and team to be here until 10:30, 11 o'clock at night. So we'll, we'll do everything we can. I know Dr. Bedell and his team will do everything they can to, to make sure that that's not the case. So with that, I'll just sort of open it up for questions, comments, concerns? No, we're good? Okay, thank you. And then we'll turn it over to our Treasurer, Mr. Barca, for the Treasurer's Report.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Looks like we got a couple TVs down, but Treasurer Report's up in front here.
All right, so looking first at our summary of revenues, expenditures, and fund balance. I think something to keep in mind as we look at all of this, right? This is the, the total of all of the different slides that we're going to break down in greater detail in the future. But an important note to, I guess, acknowledge here is that we are 75% of the way through our fiscal year at this point. So as we look at the next couple of slides, you'll see a percentage on the far right-hand side, and that's kind of the, the number you're looking to compare to. So looking at the revenues and expenditures report for Operations Fund here, the critical component of this revenues report is that the property taxes, although we're coming in at 93.8%, the delinquent taxes are still at 52% total. That's primarily because 12.6 million are currently outstanding in appeals right now. My understanding is that the state is just kind of rolling with the punches, and there's no set, determined date of which we'll know when those funds will be collected. And that's 2019, '20, and this year?
Those are just '19.
'19, okay. So we've got quite a bit of outstanding revenues there, and this is not necessarily personal property tax as much as the commercial component, right, Linda? So that's that component. As we look at the next slide here on nine, you'll see further breakdowns. I think we're one slide ahead.
Sorry.
There you go. You'll look at kind of some of the continued fees there from the revenue side. Moving on to the Intermediate County here, you'll see that the income for the county revenues are starting to come in at this point. And again, this will fluctuate, right? We usually get large lump sums versus how you get paid every month, so that's something to consider as you're looking at some of these line items with the state, county, and federal revenue lines here. Looking at the state, negative revenue shows that the local transfer to our charter school partners has occurred at this point. This is a large lump sum payment outwards that covers their expenses. So that's something that you can see has left our budget at this point. Looking at the federal revenue side, total revenues are at 83% of budget at this point. Remember going back to, we are at 72, 75% of the way through the year, so we're a little ahead there. Moving on to our overall pie here, again, this chart just reminds folks that the largest fund, the largest chunk of our funding source is the local revenue, the property taxes. 76% of our local revenue is generated through those property taxes. Looking at our expenditure side here, right on target, since teachers pay for this year as run through mid-August. So you'll see some of these lines fluctuate a little bit just because of our current COVID year impact. So as you look both here at salaries, benefits, and purchase services, you'll see some of those lines ebbing and flowing pretty dramatically away from that 75% of the year category. Looking at our purchase services, the service and supply budgets continue to remain behind due to virtual. Those things are pretty, pretty even in, in most normal years, so this is somewhat of an anomaly for our budgeting year. Same with some of those supplies as well. Looking at our capital outlay here, we have $67 million more in revenue than expenditures. However, revenue collection is largely complete while revenue expenditures continues. So right, this is how the large chunks of money come into our budget, and our expenses go throughout the year. We don't continue to receive revenue, right? So you get paid once annually here, and we have to budget for the entire fiscal year. Looking at our total pie chart, salary and benefits equals 65% of the total budget. And our expenditure side, again, paying for mostly services here for our teaching staff. Looking at our investments here, these are the investments that are made to carry us through the rest of the fiscal year so that as we get the large chunks of money in, in the revenue side, we are being fiscally responsible, investing those funds so that we can cover payroll and all the other expenses throughout the year. At this point, I will kick it over to Linda to talk about our CARES Act grant budgets.
I'm actually going to introduce Ms. Erin Thompson, our Executive Director of Business and Finance, who is managing these CARES Act dollars for us.
Okay, good evening. The CARES Act grant was authorized by the state March 13, 2020, and that's the Coronavirus Aid Relief and Economic Security Act. We call it SER-1. That was our first relief aid that we received, and that's Elementary and Secondary Emergency Education Relief. So we use these funds, per the spreadsheet you see on the screen here. We supplemented four teachers out of our virtual program for $576,908. We bought licenses for the students to work virtually for $1,231,007. IT bought all the hotspots, computers, carts, one screens for $4,677,201. We also have monies that flow through us for non-public. We have like 13 private schools that those monies flow through us, through the state. And so we have a third party that distributes those monies to the private schools. As you see, they still have a balance of like $578,000. But our balance is about $90,000. Those are mostly salaries that'll make us through the end of the year. So we had a total of $7,914,184, and we have a balance of $669,014. The majority of it is the non-public schools. Those are private schools, Catholic schools. And that's how we use our first part of our SER money. We'll be going through the SER II, which the state will authorize in May. And then we'll have the American Rescue Plan funds. They will come in October. We're projecting about $29 million for SER II for the Kansas City Public Schools. And I'll go through that later when we go through the budget.
Thank you. All right, we'll move on to ad hoc committee report. Oh, any questions, sorry. We normally move that through that pretty quickly. Any questions on the Treasurer's Report? Nope, it sounds like there are no questions.
No questions? Okay.
Nope, doesn't sound like it, sorry. You got your steps in, though. So that's a, that's a plus, right? So we'll move on to ad hoc committee reports. I'll start with the Communications and Community Engagement Committee. Dr. Jones?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. We have no report at this time as we did not hold our April meeting. But what we did discuss at our previous meeting was that we will be enhancing some of our engagement opportunities. You already kind of touched on that. I'm looking forward to working with the new members to look at how we can more creatively engage the community through some, some access points we're exploring, so thank you.
Very good. All right, and Ms. Wolfsee for Government Relations.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Government Relations, we meet all the time, it feels like, but I think what I'll do at this point is just give you two updates on some bills we're watching, right, at this point? So House Bill 137 actually passed out of the Senate Ed Committee. We, we did end up sending some testimony through our lobbyist, Jean Barge. It passed out, was that Tuesday afternoon, I want to say? And it can come up at any point in time on the Senate floor. So we will try to keep you guys up to date on that so that those of you that are watching can just kind of, if you, if you're like some of us, you can actually listen to the Senate online now, which is kind of nice, so you can actually hear what they're saying about the bill. So we'll let you know about that one. And then Senate Bill 55, it's just kind of been hanging there, and it still is. It is on what's called the informal calendar, which means it can be brought up for a floor debate at any point in time. However, it's still a bit of an omnibus bill. That's part of the reason why it's not coming up for debate, because they don't probably have the votes to get anything passed until they start working that bill and pulling things off to the point where they get their votes. So same sort of, we'll let you know as that one tends to come up as well so that you can listen if you want to follow along. We are, let's see, the last day of regular legislative session is May 14. That's a Friday. So we have roughly 10 days tomorrow, and then four days, and then five days the following week to kind of keep a watch on all of this legislation. So I have, at the request of some of people in the board, have, I will try to give you updates through, we'll continue the Legislative Weekly E-News, but if there's something urgent, we'll probably try to send something out also so we're not just waiting till that Friday if we need you to help weigh in, so. And at this point, our next scheduled meeting is May 4, and we're just kind of saying tentative at this point, because if all this legislation comes up tomorrow, we may not need to meet. But we'll, we put May 4 on your calendar for now. Any questions? Yeah?
Mr. Barca?
Ms. Wolfsee, why are these particular pieces of legislation important for us and the community to monitor?
So House Bill 137 is the bill around equity funding, and it's the one that we actually have been working with our charter counterparts over the last two years to work out something that would work for, for both constituencies. Part of the testimony that we submitted on Tuesday, I guess it was, was also that, you know, we want to make sure that our, our other board or school districts that maybe didn't have as much of an opportunity to work on this as we did also are kind of considered. So one of the things that we asked was that they consider this only applying to Kansas City, in the Kansas City area. But it protects revenues that we need, obviously, for both charters and public schools. So that's House Bill 137. SB 55 has so many things in it. It's got, I believe it still has the voucher component. There is parts about school board elections. I'm a little bit fuzzy right now what still is on SB 55, but there are a number of components to it that actually could be harmful to public school districts. So I will try to make that as a part of the E-News on Friday. And if, this is a good time for me to remind everybody what I mean by E-News. We do a weekly Friday email. If you want to be part of that and get those updates, If you want to be part of that and get those updates, send a note to legislativealerts@kcpublicschools.org. And we will add you to that list. We try really hard not to spam folks. So this is really good information, both at the local level, so the work that we've been doing around incentive reform here in Kansas City, as well as the state, some county stuff last year, more or less. But it's a really good way to stay on top of bills that are moving and why. And there are a lot of links in there, as well as your information for your reps and senators. So it's a pretty easy way for you to contact them, instead of you having to dig all that information out.
Any other questions? I have a couple of questions, actually, Ms. Wolfsee. So, can you just explain to folks, you mentioned omnibus bill, what that is? And then, sort of a follow-on, yeah, unrelated question is, what are the, what are the odds that we'll have, we'll go into a special session as well, after the current session ends?
So omnibus bills basically are bills that end up having more than one particular, legislation really should have one topic. And there is an actual reason on that. I remember doing a Facebook post about this, because there is a law, I believe, actually, on the books to that extent. But an omnibus bill is when all kinds of other legislation gets piled in to a particular bill. So the example with SB 55 is you might have vouchers, but you also might have funding. Yes, they're all related to education, but they are a little bit different. So it might also have things like school board elections moving to the fall in it. And so, what's interesting about omnibus bills, they're very difficult to get across the finish line. And the reason is, it's just logical, if you think about it. Everybody, like, it's much easier to get everybody around one idea than it is to get everybody around three or four or five ideas. You, and you need a certain amount of votes, obviously, to get a bill passed. So, that's why omnibus bills don't, one, they really shouldn't come forward, because of the fact that I think there is a statute on the books that it's really one bill, one topic. But because of the fact they have multiple topics in them, that's the reason why they're very difficult to pass. Because you might be okay with these three things in the bill, but not this one, and therefore you would vote no on that particular bill. So that's an omnibus bill. So you said the, oh, odds of special session. So special session, again, has to be called by the governor for a specific topic. So, you're asking about the odds of having a special session? I think, as far as the time of me being on the board, we've always had a special session. It's just what is called into that particular session. That I don't know. It does have to be one topic as well. Does that help?
Thank you. Any other questions? Okay, we'll turn it over to Dr. Bedell for the Superintendent's Report. Apologies, I promise I will get used to this. Ms. Cortez for the Finance Committee.
Finance committee met last week and spent quite a bit of time with Ms. Quinley and her team, Ms. Thompson and others, going through a number of components related to the budget that we're going to hear some more about tonight, and a lot more about next month. And in particular, some of the reconciliation of expenses, to be able to do some projections for the end of this year, to give us, to do our planning for next year. So, next month, we'll be looking at both budget and audit responses in the Finance Committee.
Great, thank you. Apologies, Ms. Cortez. Now we'll turn it over to Dr. Bedell for the Superintendent's Report.
All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman. We have a couple of items under the Superintendent's Report tonight. We want to start off with our video highlight, which will focus on Blueprint 2030 Engagement. And you heard some of our student district advisory committee members reference to their involvement and the work that they're doing to also obtain input from the student body as a whole across the district. We will then move in and give everybody an update on where we are with our next phase of bringing more students back into our schools on a more regular basis. But also to make sure that we are sharing with everybody where our thinking is as far as our secondary schools are concerned. So I'll have Dr. Shepherd along with a couple of our, I call them COVID officers, to kind of give us some updates, along with myself. And then we'll do the FY, I know exactly. And then we'll do the FY 21, 22 budget update and the SRT2 plan, which would then conclude the Superintendent's Report. So we are ready to run the video to start off.
It's time for KCPS to dream big, and for our students, our teammates, our families, and our community to help us with that dream. We want to imagine a future for our school district and city that includes the ideas, solutions, and directions that we build together. Our Blueprint 2030 process has started, and we are engaging our community around how we approach the future of our schools in KCPS. Essentially, we want to know, what do you want KCPS to look like in 2030? This five and 10-year strategic process will serve as our vision for the next decade. We'll be discussing many topics, from programming, to grade level configurations, to the student experience and culture and climate, to increasing perception, performance, and increasing the KCPS brand, to facilities improvements, to a future bond or levy strategy. Yes, we are tackling many topics, but visions that are essential to our future. In our process, we are building out several phases. We are goal-setting, planning for future KCPS scenarios and ideas, making recommendations, and then putting our plans into action. All along the way, our advisory team, our students, our staff members, our families, and our community have the ability to help shape our future. We want to be bold. We have created a dedicated webpage for our KCPS Blueprint 2030 Engagement efforts and plans. From community conversations, to surveys, to gallery walks, and feedback platforms, we look forward to engaging and hearing from our community. We will shape and refine our city's school district together. As we rise in performance, we are ready for this adventure, seeking innovative, cutting-edge, and future-ready experiences and facilities for our students and families. Join us. And just as our community will join us in this conversation, our students have started to provide voice to their dreams and ideas for the future of our schools, too. Superintendent Dr. Mark Bedell has been visiting with our students about these topics throughout the year. We've been listening to students from first grade to high school. We want you to hear what they have to say. And for the future of KCPS, thank you for joining our journey. And here are their voices.
As we think about the future of this school district, it is important that we listen and hear from current students in the school system. Our ultimate goal is to ensure that the Kansas City Public School District offers a first-class educational programming for our students. But not only that, we want to make sure that our students are being developed socially and emotionally, so that as they graduate and matriculate through our system, that these students are now globally competitive. What are your aspirational goals? What do you want to see happen for you? How do we, as a school district, how do we better serve you as you move up to make sure that you're prepared for graduation and beyond?
Well, I think renovations, donations, and other kinds of reformations within the program could be really beneficial towards the academic standpoint of.
Instead of like, for us, like, instead of like iPads, it was like actual laptops.
Okay.
Or like, the separate computer and screen.
Okay, okay.
For like, third grade and up, you need like, the separate screen, the one-screen one. But for like, second grade and older, just the laptop.
Okay, I got you. You rather have that included in the package, rather than just the iPads, the Apple iPads.
More modern, like, more room for people's backgrounds to be in, and less racism, a lot less racism. And no bullies.
And no bullying, right? Because I agree with that. But I do agree, I do agree. He's right, right? We gotta, we have to, that's a topic that we have to address in this city. And I, and oftentimes, we dodge those questions, but that's the reason why we're doing the equity work in our school district. That's why we have the Equity Policy 0.0, right? So that we do not allow for discriminatory practices to happen to any of our students, based on how they show up. We recognize that a lot of our students show up with variables that are beyond their control, lived experiences. But the same applies to adults. We show up with biases that we all naturally have. So our goal is to figure out, how do we check those biases at the door? So that they don't impact each individual student? Because we already have this preconceived thought process or notion around what they can or cannot do. So I absolutely agree with that statement, and that's something that we know as a school district, we have to be more intentional and more conscious around. And then that would also eliminate bullying.
I think that schools should be more diverse. At my school, I mostly see black people, but I like to see Latinos, Hispanics, whites, everyone. Because then we get to learn from different backgrounds. And then when we transition into college, we don't feel so alone in our salute environment. We can just easily tune. I think that's important.
I think a program that should be available to students is entrepreneurship program. What I think is that students should have available mentors that fits within the student's profession of what they want to do. We have a lot of entrepreneurs, and I think just having that program available to them for us will really help us be successful in our journey. Another thing I'd like to touch on is that I want to thank KCPS for the ECA program, which I am in. It helps me get my credits early, and so now I only have to complete two years in college, which saves a lot of money, a lot of time, and is going to reach me more to my goal.
I like to do robotics, because I really think it's like, inspiring and fun to do something that could like, be a next generation thing. Went to a couple chess tournaments. I really think chess is like, focusing and like, stress-relieving, and it's just fun to play.
Well, I definitely think there needs to be a little bit of improvement within the curriculum, whether it's Black History, or Latino History, or even Asian Studies. I think that us being one of the most diverse districts in the city, that we should foster the creativity and education within these students who are minorities.
All right, well, I want to thank Kelly Waiteau and her team. I think that was a wonderful job of putting that together and being able to capture some of the conversations that we're starting to have throughout the organization. So, I want to move to our next item. And for this item, it's around opening up schools. As you all know, our school district has been through what I would deem probably a very unprecedented year, that none of us could ever wish that anybody would have to go through. And there were many casualties in this process of trying to figure out how to navigate this national health pandemic. That was not limited just to administrators and teachers, but there were family members impacted by this throughout our communities. Students were impacted by this. And as we worked to navigate through the process, we wanted to do everything that we could to be as intentional as possible, to adhere to the best of our ability to the current data that we were receiving, whether that was from the CDC, or from the respective health departments that we meet with on a weekly basis here. And we find ourselves now having brought our kids back in a hybrid model since March 15th. And we are now getting ready to phase to full in-person learning on May 3rd for pre-K through elementary, which will be on Monday. Those kids will be in five days a week. And in most cases, we are able to do this while adhering to the three-feet requirements. Are there several classrooms where we're not necessarily able to accommodate? Yes, that is a reality. But we also have worked with our building principals, we've worked with our teachers, we've worked with our parents to let them know that there are going to be a few classes where we may have to squeeze an additional desk or two in, and it may not be exactly at three feet. And, but we think it's the right thing to do as a school district, is to try to do everything that we can to get our kids in five days a week. We have not received a bunch of negative feedback about our process. The truth is, I shared this with a couple of us cabinet members and a couple of board members. I've actually received three different emails over the last few days. One was, why haven't we brought them back earlier? And why aren't they all back in at this time? Another one was, okay, we understand that you're not going to be able to accomplish at the secondary level, every single secondary kid being in 100% of the time, because of, there are space concerns that we have at several of our schools. We've measured classrooms, and we just, in certain facilities, like a Lincoln College Prep, it's just not possible to have 100% of kids in that building. But there are other secondary schools, like Paseo, Central, Central Middle, Northeast, where we are going to be able to accomplish having those kids in there four days a week, because the enrollment in those schools are smaller. But there are also significantly larger facilities that will allow for us to be able to accomplish having those secondary kids in, and being able to adhere to the spacing requirements. It is our intention, in this school district, that as we phase back in, starting on Monday with our elementary kids, that we continue to work with our secondary schools, and eventually have all of them, with the exception of that one school, because there's just no way we can do it right now, to have them all back in at 100% capacity. And we will be working with them, so that we can at least have an opportunity over the last several weeks of the school year to test what full capacity will look like. But during the summer, we are going to be fully committed to doing the work that needs to be done to ensure that at a Lincoln College Prep, because we expect the enrollment to actually increase, based on the demand that we have right now, also based on the fact that we just had a recent notification that Lincoln is ranked number two in the state of Missouri, number two in the area, because of the progress we've been making over there. There is going to continuously be demand there. We do not want to lose a single one of our students, and we do not want our families moving out of the area because of uncertainty. It is our full intention that Lincoln will be in full person when we get back to school in August. And if that means that we have to take a look at another building that may be mothballed and figure out how to be innovative in utilizing some of our CARES Act funding, we will do that to make sure that that happens. The only thing that stops us from not being back in full-time is if something crazy happens with this virus that we just have no control over, and everybody in the nation finds themselves back in that scenario. The federal government will not hear of any excuses of schools, in my opinion, not being back in full-time come August, given the amount of resources that they've given us. So it will be unacceptable, and I don't think that is something that we will be able to answer to with DESI or anybody else, if we have not figured out how to make sure that we're in 100%. We believe we'll have 98, 98, 99% of our schools will be at 100% before this year ends, and that's our commitment. Our middle school and high school model, while we're working to bring them back full-time, is that we are going to operate on a hybrid equity model. So what does that mean? In some cases, where we do not have the full capacity, or able to bring 100% of our kids back, our teachers and administrators know that there are students who need to be in four days a week. Whether they have been struggling because of this pandemic, whether it's attendance struggles, whether it's academic struggles, or there are seniors that need to be in four days a week. We are going to have those kids in four days a week, and that will happen in the immediate future, beginning with this upcoming week. We've already worked with our secondary, am I, am I correct on this, Dr. Shepherd? Okay, I want to make sure, I'm, I'm doing her part. You may not have to get up at all. But, but we are looking at working on full-time return based on capacity numbers. We're not doing this because we don't want our kids back. I know that there are several parents that have expressed concerns, but I've said this over and over, I'm one of those parents. You think that I want my nine-year-old and my senior at home working? And, and it's a struggle for us to be able to manage all of that? We're not immune to the same things that every other parent has had to deal with. We want them back in school, but we want to be able to do so safely. And because of the way that we have handled this pandemic, that is the reason why we believe that we're going to have over 90% of our teachers return, because we have taken into account their health and their well-being, while also doing the work that we need to do to work with our students. There are going to be a number of school districts in this state that are going to have a difficult time with staffing. And that is out, that if we lose more than 2% of our teachers in the state of Missouri, we're in a world of trouble, because there is no pipeline to replace these teachers. Substitutes cannot teach our kids. I was a substitute teacher, I can tell you. Substitutes cannot teach our kids unless they already have certification and deep experience. We have to have certified teachers in these classrooms. And so we had to make sure that we did everything to make sure that these people were vaccinated, and that every mitigation effort that we said we were going to do, that we've been able to deliver on it. That is the reason why we don't have a ton of protesting in this district. That is the reason why we don't have an exodus of teachers, because we were very meticulous with our plan. And so, we believe that our next phase now is to work on everything that we need to do to bring them back 100% across the system. But starting with our elementary schools, that will happen beginning on Monday. Our communication along the way has gone well. We have had positive feedback from our elementary families as to how things have been going. We know that COVID is a reality. We know that people are still coming down with the virus, even as we receive vaccinations. I did want to have, give an opportunity for Sarah Williams and Lauren Grimes, if you all just want to, you know, around the COVID numbers in the community, in the vaccine clinics, for our students at our high schools, if you just want to give a quick update on how that's going, that would be great, just to make sure that our board and community know where we are. And these two ladies will not give us the check of approval to move forward if they didn't believe that we would be able to accomplish it. Trust me on that.
Well, thank you, Dr. Bedell. But thank you for letting, for letting Nurse Grimes and I speak. COVID numbers in our area are looking good. They're holding steady. We're seeing some slight uptick. We're watching it very closely, to make sure that we're in that safe zone per CDC guidance. We are working very hard to get people that want to be vaccinated, vaccinated. We had a student clinic this week. And Nurse Grimes, do you have any numbers for us on how many students were vaccinated?
We, we've only done half of them, because Children's Mercy came to all the six high schools on Tuesday. And then they will come again on Thursday to do the, you know, A group and B group. We had approximately 87 children that signed up. But there were a lot of kids that parents were called, and they came and did it. So I did not get a number from Children's Mercy of how many they did on Tuesday. But I've heard that they're going to do more on Thursday, because people who missed it on Tuesday are actually coming in to the school, even, you know, just for the vaccine.
Great, so, so word is getting out, right? As we're coming back in and we're coming together, I think community and parents and staff are knowing that we need to get as many folks vaccinated as we can, so we can stay in business. And that's really the important thing. We want our kids back. I can't wait to see all their smiling faces on May 3rd, and I sure, I'm sure you can either. If you have any questions, we'd be happy to take them.
Any questions? Dr. Jones? Sorry.
Sorry, it's more of a comment, but I just wanted to applaud the efforts that I've seen to get this done, and as Dr. Bedell calls a meticulous manner. I've been one of, as a parent of a third grader and a kindergartner, I've been one of the most strident urgers of moving back. But I can say that the methodical way that we've done it has been in keeping with the public health guidance. I will also say that in support of how you guys are going about the, the middle and the high school piece, I think that is on point, because we have been seeing the uptick in the 12 to 19-year-olds. That's where we're seeing the majority uptick, as well as with this B117 variant, when we think about the long COVID and the complications associated. We are seeing uptick with that in that age group. So I think it's great that we are focusing on getting vaccinations for that 16 and older age group. And I, and I think this is the right approach, this phased approach. I know everybody wants to get back in. I'm ready. My kids have been happy with their little two-days. They're ready for the five-day. I'm ready. My husband's ready. But this really is just the right approach, and I'm saying this as a public health professional, so I just appreciate it.
Um, I would like to add one thing too. One, uh, a lot of students told us the reason they did not get the vaccine at our clinics is because they have already received them. So outside of just our clinics, um, the kids are getting their vaccines.
That is true because my son got his outside of the clinic. I can tell you that.
Yeah. Well, thank you.
Any other questions?
Yes, I have a question. Um, and Dr. Bedell, you mentioned in some of those classrooms, uh, you've had to push a few more students in. Are there additional measures being taken because they're unable to be three feet?
Yes, um, um, we have a, a layered mitigation strategy, right? So, so our first line of defense is to get as much room between everyone to the extent possible. Okay? So if we don't have that, then we go with our second line defenses, which is barriers that you all are using now, mask wearing, hand washing, hand hygiene, um, um, podding kids together, cohorting kids together, making sure that any kids that are together stay together during, during the week. Our bus routes, we're still, um, utilizing the method of seating charts and then, and then having kids enter the bus and exit from the other, from the other direction. Um, making sure our lunchrooms, we, we have enough space because we know the danger zone for our kids is when their masks are off and they're eating. So really taking care to make sure that all of those measures are put into the nth degree. And boy, do we have a great set of principles that are implementing all of that. So we're very happy with that response.
And contact tracing. All the nurses have taken six-hour John Hopkins course on contact tracing. So that's like our first, um, one, one of the best mitigation strategies the CDC offers is, um, good contact tracing and quarantine and isolation, and we've been working real hard on that too.
Is there a recommendation on, um, where students are eating? It, it, would you, are you recommending that they eat in the lunchroom, in the classroom? Um, since that is a high-risk time?
Board member Buckner, that's being looked at by a school-by-school basis. So we're looking at that very, uh, carefully to make sure that we're utilizing all our space to the extent possible. So wherever we can eke out space, we're doing it. We're just containing kids to the, to the lunchroom. I mean, I'm a big fan of picnics at this point, right? So, so whatever that's going to take to make sure that our kids are as safe as possible is the route we're taking.
And let me, let me answer that, and I'll give you some specifics. So I'll, I'll use East High School as an example, one of our larger high schools. So when the kids are in, uh, when I went to visit last week, I had an opportunity to go to the cafeteria and check on kids and see how it was going. They have multiple areas where kids can eat, and then if their area fills up, they allow for kids to eat in the auditorium. And there's a ton of space in the auditorium. So different schools have different setups, just depending on availability of space, but that's probably been the most difficult part for us trying to figure out at the high school level. If you bring 100% of them back, how do you accommodate exactly what, what you're asking around lunches? That's going to be very hard at a Lincoln College Prep or East High School. I mean, those are the, probably the schools that have the two highest amount of enrollment, and those are the two schools we have the most concerns about with a full-blown 100% return.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Thank you. Um, I'm going to bring up the question I asked you a little bit earlier because I think as we're returning to, uh, full in-person learning, starting in the elementary, I think it's just important that we try to understand where we want to point parents for information. So if a child in a classroom ends up testing positive, um, and what is the protocol for, for, um, parent notification in that particular classroom? If you're in a co-, you know, because you said you're using cohorts, and, uh, so do, can you explain what that process mi- will be?
Sure. Uh, um, I will tell you that, that in our contact tracing, isolation and containment protocol, um, staff, students are notified immediately if they are, if they are considered a close contact of a COVID case. So that way we're, we're quarantining, quarantining people at home. They do their 14-day quarantine per KCHD guidance, and then, and then welcome back to school. So, um, with our notification system with parents, so if a child is a close contact, let's say they have a close contact to school with a COVID positive case, then we are notifying that parent via phone. Then the nursing department is handling that piece. And then what we'll do is we'll follow up with communication to the classroom to let them know, hey, there was a COVID case in the classroom, and that communication will come from the principal. We won't identify the student just because we want to protect everyone's medical privacy, but if we have indication through our contact tracing that a student is a close contact or a staff member is a close contact, we will certainly notify them via phone, follow up with them via email, but we will notify that classroom through the, through the principal, and then staff will be notified, um, either through me or through the principal. We're kind of working out that final detail. Does that answer your question? Okay.
Dr. Jones?
Just real quick, uh, Mr. Chair, I just wanted to vouch, that process worked very well. My child, my kindergarten's class had to be quarantined, and we were notified immediately. We weren't happy about the two weeks away, but, but, um, it just was a very efficient process. We were notified immediately. We knew what was going on, how long, what date to return, all of that. So it worked well.
We do, we do try and, um, let you know the dates of return and ask parents to let us know if this, if any of the quarantined kids develop any symptoms, because that would require a different date. Um, so we do all of that sometimes at nine o'clock at night. So, you know, you're getting phone calls, but, uh, we try to make sure you, we, we seem to find out about them about four o'clock.
All right. Well, thank you. Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Oh, wait a minute. Wait, we have one more question, Ms. Cortez.
This question is not for Ms. Williams or, um, Ms. Grimes. Um, this is really for you and your team. I, I, Ms. Buckner and I were talking during the break about how we're communicating beyond just the school, and it, it seems like our information on the site, the website, is kind of trailing those communications, and I think it would be helpful in terms of our ability, because we don't necessarily see all those school-based communications around the return to school and some of the protocols, if we could just keep the reopening site kind of working in concert with all of that other communication that's happening.
We just redlined all of the reopening.
Yeah, we just finished redlining all of the reopening documents that are in concert with the full-time reopening, so that'll be updated as soon as possible, but I appreciate that comment very much.
Anything else? Okay, Dr. Bedell.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Chair. We will move on now to our FY 2122 budget update and our S R 2 plan.
Good evening, Board Chair Hogan, Dr. Bedell and board and our public. It's exciting to be at this point in the year, and my friends haven't been following the guidance here on the thing, so I'm just going to do this real quick. There we go. Um, yeah. So we have had a lot of great time this year interacting with, um, the finance committee and then with you, board, last week in a, in a workshop around our budget. And I was in a little bit of a panic, I'll be honest, for a little while about our timeline because we've had some people that are key players who have needed to be out, and it's a harder year than ever to project and to plan when it comes to budgeting, but I feel really good about where we are. I feel like we've kind of caught up and we know where we're headed. So quickly, if we think about our capital projects planning, I apologize, those numbers are so small, um, that's what happens when you snip in a spreadsheet. Really what you see there are the revenue lines, and what's most important, one, two, three line debt, lines down under that change column, you see a large increase of $9.7 million in next year's capital projects fund budget. That is our merchants and manufacturers tax, which has gone into that fund for many, many years now, as it was specifically identified by administration and the board to be the repayment source for our outstanding debt. We temporarily borrowed that into operating last year because of where we were, but we're putting it back this year, and so that was important to make sure we share with you. It's also important because you'll notice some negatives down below that. If you just follow that trail, we have some lines that are either going away or reducing dramatically, one of those being sale of property, because we don't have contracts on the books right now for anything that's going to sell, and we had a couple this last year. Another one being E-rate reimbursement, which is an every-other-year model. When you spend E-rate money, then you get reimbursement in the trailing year. We didn't spend any E-rate eligible capital this year, so therefore we won't have any E-rate reimbursement in this fund next year. And then the CARES Act dollars that went into, to capital this year. If you go to the very bottom, that's what I wanted to share with you real quickly before we move past this slide, projected ending fund balance. So that first column shows you what this year is going to look like. We're going to end at just under $13 million in fund balance there. And the reason that is important is because we've got that annual principal and interest payment that comes out of this fund, and we, we are, we need to carry next year's payment in our fund balance as closely as we can. So it's a good starting point for us, um, but we are, right now, none of these are final numbers that I'm sharing with you. They're still draft in, in work numbers, but we're getting close. We're looking to end next year at about 7.5 million in this fund. These are the primary projects that are on the list right now for next year. Again, that first line being the principal and interest requirement we have on existing debt. And then you can kind of run through the other, these are just the bigger projects. Um, Phase Two of Woodland, if you look at the bottom, that's a big one, and then Stage One of getting the technology fiber loop going. Those are the, really the big, big items next year. So then, we have talked a lot and worked a lot specifically around revenues. That's important you do that first in public education because we don't impact our revenues like a for-profit or a, a business would as much. So these are our primary additions and how we bought them, basically, if you look at the bottom. So you can see, as you look down through those lines, how they align with the superintendent's goals that he shared with you first in January for this year. So we're adding three new classrooms into early education. We're opening in staffing the newcomer center, additional special, special education supports, extended learning, additional marketing funds, and there's a tiny bit of increase in staffing in the school equity model, and then compensation for teachers and staff for next year. And the way we were able to afford those, because we don't have dramatically increasing revenues in the operating budget, is we had to buy those items, basically, by going in and looking for where we could be more efficient and where we could make reductions. So you see those there, um, the largest one being that second blue bullet, school staffing and reductions based on enrollment. We have, we do have decreased enrollment this year, and so therefore we have responded to that via staffing. The good news is that while that is a reduction of 32.85 FTE, we have, we're able to absorb that in attrition. And so people are not losing their jobs, but we are not backfilling everything that opens and kind of, and Dr. Shepherd and Dr. Collier will work on how we place staff. And then another, our timing was good to move to self-insured medical and to plan for self-insured work comp because that's helping us produce those savings and efficiencies in the operating budget. So then operating fund balance, and as Ms. Cortez said, we have really tried to focus and do some work on projecting what is this year going to look like when it ends, so that as you're considering a budget for next year, we have a really good picture of what the next year's fund balance would end up looking like. So that top section shows you based on our current projections that we'll end at 67.07 million dollars in fund balance, and that's, of course, would be then the starting point for next year. We think we're going to bring you a budget that spends roughly a million dollars more than we're bringing in. Very comfortable with that because, uh, that's a nice fund balance that we're coming into the year with, so that we would end then just around $67 million the next year. It is possible, as we get close to the end, when we think back to that capital project slide, that we do have really limited revenues going into that fund. It's possible if our reserves are in, in the right place, that we may come to you and might ask for an, an allow, an annually allowable transfer from operating to capital, just to put a little more money in there in case things happen. We haven't had a chance to work through that fully and get the superintendent's sign-off on that, but it's important to think about it in context of looking at these numbers. And then Ms. Thompson, whose team is handling the many, many dollars of federal S R, is going to talk to you about how we're planning to use S R 2 in next year's budget.
Okay, our plan for S R 2 funds, we've met with, um, school leadership, operations, uh, HR cabinet, and we started planning on how are we going to spend $29 million for S R 2 funds? So this is what we've come up. It's a proposal. The first item we have on there is our restorative justice staff, which is under Dr. Woodley, uh, which you all have met before. It's our, uh, those four FTEs there. We also want to purchase some testing kits for students, and I think that, that's around $500,000. We will continue to, um, have HR, our attorney there, Sarah, part of her salary will be charged there. We will have virtual teachers, software for 1.3 million. We will have the class size reduction teachers. This is new. We always wanted a pool of teachers, science and math, that we can call upon to go to any school at any time, so we put that in this proposal also. And we also put in here like a night school or a twilight school for those students who want to continue working, I gotta take this off, those students who want to continue to work in outside of the normal education, uh, time, where they could work on education three to eight or something like that. We wanted to include that proposal in here also. Uh, we also include in here those nine additional calendar days, um, six for students and three for a PD. That's $4,972,878. We also included in here our summer school for secondary. We pulled our secondary staff and, uh, out, and transportation out, and we included that in the S R, so help, to help us free up, uh, funds in the operating budget, but that was allowable, and that's $2,052,472. We also have in here the school-based funding for accelerated learning options. This is like a grant that, um, school leadership will use for the schools for additional funding, for them to decide at each school discretionary, what do you want to use with this, this $2 million? We said not FTEs, but if you want to do after-school tutoring, additional after-school tutoring, you can use this. And then a $500,000 of it, I think we set aside for attendance, uh, to help, uh, get our attendance up, incentive, attendance incentive, $500,000 of that, $2,050,000. We also set aside funds for custodial. We have to have additional custodians in the building to help us with the mitigation of coronavirus. So that's 922,948. Uh, security is 85,000. Transportation, that's 1,651,499. Homeless transportation and those additional calendar days that we added to the calendar. We have to have transportation for that. We also want to look at our buildings, uh, air quality in those buildings. So we set aside 6,537,158 for that, for hydration systems, air quality filters. And we also have to remember, we have to continue to fund our technology. We have to, uh, narrow that gap and continue to have, um, technology support. So we put 6.2 million there for that. And, uh, we also, uh, put in here nursing services. We, uh, included, uh, Nurse Grimes, some of her salary there because she leads our mitigation staff, so that's 546,851. Our contingency right now and indirect cost is 716,139 for a total budget of 29,149,69. And it's a proposal, uh, we've met many times, and everybody, you know, I think we changed it eight times is what my staff tells me. So, but, uh, we've placed this in EPGS. Uh, I was at Moazbo training Monday and Tuesday, and they only have two people working on this, so we don't know when the approval will come through. They hired two more people for the whole state of Missouri, so four people are going to look at it, and they'll let us know in May, uh, the, the decision on what we, uh, submitted. But any capital items, the state has to approve first, like any of the HVAC systems. But that's pretty much what we have proposed for our S R 2 funds. Any questions?
Mr. Barker?
Yeah, let me, uh, first applaud you because I know this is a lot of hard work, and as we've talked about in finance committee and, and other budget conversations, this is not easy to figure out priorities and, and, and outline them like this. So- So, to Dr. Bedell's team, the other component is, I love the innovation here, right? Like the night school concept and some of the, the flexibility you're providing to schools to make decisions on the needs that they can outline. So I think those things are critical, and I know, I, I think Mr. Rand is probably going to do some data tracking and at some point, get back to us. I imagine the night school concept is probably something you want to look at in the future, outside of these funding things. So I'm excited to see those things. When it comes to the enhanced HVAC system, obviously, I'm going to bring this up, the sustainability components, it's critical, as we've had conversations about trying to figure out how we can improve some of our environmental sustainability components in these opportunities. As the single, single largest budget item in your, your allocation here, I'm going to look forward to seeing some of that stuff too. So kudos on the innovation.
Thank you. Dr. Jones?
Thank you. I just had a quick question, the, the, for the student supporting intervention, the first line item, does that include the extra intervention costs that Dr. Woodley brought to us last month, or is this?
These are the four restorative justice positions we currently have. The counselors are in the operating budget, and we place a counselor at every school this year, for next year.
So, well, I'll, I'll ask for other questions first. Ms. Buckner?
This is just a clarifying question on the KCVA. Can you explain to me what that is?
Oh, that's the Kansas City Virtual Academy.
Okay. Thank you.
Ms. Cortez?
So, I'm kind of going back to what Dr. Bedell talked about in his presentation about the, the open question of additional adaptations we may have to make in order to be a hundred percent in-person in the fall. Do we have flexibility, if we submit a proposal to the state and then realize that we need to open a mothball building to accommodate sufficient spacing so that all of our schools can be fully in-person?
We have flexibility to change it at the state. And we have contingency funds down here also. It's probably about six hundred thousand in contingency that we have not set aside for specifics.
To my career in construction.
I know. I know. If we have a big variance, yes, we could change it.
Okay.
And another item, I, you know, from the transportation one point six, they have another grant out there, the government, governor's release, relief fund. And we're going to try to get some of that transportation money out of that too, and that might free up some more money. I'm always looking to try to see where else I can get funds.
Let me, let me get in, and sometimes I have to come in and catch that, catch that rebound. So I'm going to catch this one for you.
Okay.
So, I know, because she's, she's a former Division One basketball player, so she knows what I'm talking about. But Ms. Cortez, we also know that this money, in order for it to be triggered and released, we do have to get this approved at the state level. But we also know, what we know is, we're going to receive sixty-two million or so that we, that we're going to get in extra three money. So we, we will have the flexibility, even if it means, let's say, from a construction standpoint, it ends up being more, we can make amendments here, and we can do that. We also have a very healthy fund balance, so if we have to do that, and then when we get the extra three money, move that, we can reimburse back into our fund balance. So we're going to be, we're going to be totally fine. We talked about this in cabinet on Monday. But that's a great question.
Just, I, I know that it's only the end of April, but August feels like it's tomorrow.
I know. You're right.
Ms. Wolfsey?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to double-check something. So the four FTEs for the restorative justice, the two point five million that she really wants down the road is not, like, are you looking at S R funds are mostly going to be used towards things that are not FTEs permanent, correct?
Yes. This is for coronavirus relief.
Right.
And learning loss.
Yes. But in the case of FTEs here under class size reduction, you know, the sixteen FTEs that you, or, I mean, it's not just that, but class size reduction teachers, what I wanted to, because that's not permanent, it's just like a temporary.
It's ten class size reduction and six for the night school.
Okay. And only for a period of time?
Two to three years. This money's going to flow.
Got it. And so to Mr. Abarca's point, I think, you know, this is also an opportunity, and I'm looking at Mr. Rand, because to do some baseline, some benchmark testing to see, does that make, like, what sort of a difference does that make, so that if we ever wanted to go get more of those for a more permanent type of implementation, we would have some real data that we could use. And the last thing, I wanted to double-check my math. So we've had six point five million in S R one, plus the twenty-nine now, so that I've got that at thirty-five point five, plus the sixty-two coming, so a total of ninety-seven million over two to three-year period that we'll have, okay?
Yes.
Any other questions? I have just a comment and a question.
So, comment on the, the self-insured move? Thank you, right? Great move. The timing just worked out perfectly. I was a big fan right out of the gate on this one, just because I've seen it work at Cerner and other organizations. And so, I mean, that one point two, five million dollars is nothing to shake at, so thank you for that. On the, so slide thirty, the early childhood education piece, how many additional students does that fund? I know it's three additional classrooms, but.
That will fund a total of forty-eight?
Sixty.
Sixteen per class, so forty-eight.
Twenty per. Twenty students per.
Oh, twenty.
Sixty total.
Sixty, okay. And how many do we have today? How many seats?
I had about twelve hundred.
Yeah.
When, when you add up the, so we have the early childhood that we do at Montessori, and then we also have the early childhood that we do pre-K at some of our other sites. So we have right at about twelve hundred seats right now, and we're trying to expand that by another sixty.
Okay. Including our partners, right? And when you say other sites, that's including?
Yes. And, and we also have, we're a, a partner, we have a collaborative that we work with, and we have forty students that are in that collaborative. So that would give us about thirteen hundred.
Good. Thank you.
I think, Mr. Hogan, on that, another really great point. This has been something that Dr. Shepherd and Dr. Bedell have really pushed on, this constant, it's, it's not easy to constantly find the resources to expand pre-K, but we lost those MPP grants three years ago that we're funding a large number of our classrooms. So this board has approved budgets over the last three years that has really picked up the large cost of preschool, because it is not funded, basically. It is basically unfunded. And so, kudos to you, but you're going to see us continue to just pick away at it a little bit, until we get all the way through blueprint twenty-thirty and have that final plan.
Appreciate it. Ms. Buckner?
Yes, I'm looking at the school-based funding for accelerating learning options, and thinking about equity zero point zero, is, aside from the five hundred thousand dollars for, uh...
Attendance?
For attendance, yes, for attendance, is, is it distributed evenly, or how does that work?
Yes. What we did is, we took the amount of money and we divided it by the total number of students, and it's, we got a per-unit allocation. So every school is getting money based on a per-unit allocation. Generally, we do give students, we, we have a model where we fund equity. However, with this money, we looked at the number of students that are at every school, and we multiplied it by, I believe it came out to be one hundred and seven dollars and fourteen cents. So every school got that amount per student that is projected to be enrolled for next school year.
Okay. Thank you.
You sure you get on that, Ms. Buckner? We can always follow up with questions.
I just wonder about our schools, about our schools, our signature schools who have, you know, or, or at capacity, and thinking about our schools that are struggling right now. And so I just wonder, you know, what that'll look like and how we keep it equitable.
As you get, as you get your budget document, and you got a little bit of a peek at it last week, we use the equity model for our tier three-two-one, so that our tier-three schools get much greater resources from the operating budget out of the gate. Same for signature. There's a signature model where they get additional resources for those signature programs. So a school can have two or three different accesses to funding, in addition to what is just typical for a building based on enrollment.
But just not with this?
Title, yes, and title funding.
Okay.
But, but correct, not from this piece.
Ms. Wolfsey?
I think the follow-up to that for me, then, is why the decision not to apply an equity lens to the two oh five oh?
Well, the reason is because we already have an equity model where they get significantly more, and we know that everyone is dealing with the learning loss, and, or, I don't want to say learning loss, but with unfinished learning. And so, we know that, and so we wanted to just distribute it equally. However, we, all of our schools, like, whenever they need additional resources, additional anything, they always get what they need. So with this money, we felt like we wanted to do a per-unit allocation, because all we had was one point five million dollars. And to look at an equity-based model here would mean that some of our schools, everybody needs money. That's the thing. I mean, we're talking about, you know, the, I mean, I think every school was affected by this, and this money, we wanted it to touch every school, so we just did a per-unit allocation. However, when you look at what tier-three schools get on a regular basis, they get a lot more. When you look at what tier-two schools, they get more than tier-one schools. Most of our signatures fall in tier-one. So that means that they get their signature money, but as far as general funds, they get a certain allocation of what, of resources. However, when you move over to tier-two, they get a few more. But when you move over to tier-three, and we've got twelve tier-three schools, they get, I mean, like, they may be small, but many of them get an entire V vice principal, even though the state has only allocated point five, we give them the whole, or the state may not, based on their enrollment, give them any. We give them that, we give them interventions, we give a lot of things to them so that they can have what they need. And then, of course, they always have the opportunity to ask for more. I have a contingency fund, and so any school that, when they need more of anything, they get what they need out of that contingency fund, if they can justify the need.
Yeah, I appreciate that. I would just be willing, I'd, I'd be wanting to dig more into, like, when we decide to apply the equity model, because equity, we know, like, they get more because they need more, right?
Right.
So, yeah, I'd, I'd be interested in digging into that. Thank you.
Sure.
Okay. I think we're good. Dr. Bedell, you want to move into regular business items?
Yeah, let me get my agenda back. All right, so now we're moving into the closing phase of the superintendent's report. So we have four business items that we bring to the board, that we would ask the board to take action on. Tico, oh, three, you're right, three. Tico Productions, Quality Roofing, and then AIG Specialty Insurance Company. And so for Tico Productions, we do have representatives here from Tico Production. What we are asking the board is that we've already engaged in multiple conversations regarding Tico Productions and their ability to help us with our recruitment of, of students. We know that the board still will have some additional questions, and that's part of the reason why we, we moved this contract from consent and moved it into the business item. But what we are asking the board to do is to approve this contract with Tico Productions for strategic marketing services. Tico Production is a multilingual marketing agency specializing in cause marketing, creative strategy, and social media. The annual cost of this contract is one hundred twenty-five thousand dollars, and is available in the operating budget of the Communication Division. Tico is a one hundred percent MBE WBE vendor. And so for this contract, I'll have Ms. Waite, I know there may, there are some additional questions before the board takes action.
Any questions? Ms. Ford?
Yeah, just a general question, and I may have missed this, because it was before me. What would we say is, like, success in its general form? Like, if, if we do this, then this will be the result of, of working with from a strategic marketing standpoint?
Yeah, so do you want to answer that, or you want me to do it?
You go, and I'll tag team you.
So, yeah, for us, I mean, ultimately, our goal is to be able to have a company come in and help us with being able to, to market segment and target areas within the city that we're, we're, we're seeing that there's a significant loss of students, but they're not necessarily moving out there in the city. How do we also leverage this partnership to help us become more competitive with increasing our enrollment against our charter counterparts? Many of our charter counterparts have figured out this marketing game, and I think they're much further ahead of, of it than we are. I, I've been very clear with this board and the community. I'm not a marketing expert. I took a twelve-hour marketing course at Rice University, and at that time, I wasn't a building principal, I was supervising them. So for me, it's an area that I know I need support in. I do have a mentor that works with me pretty much once or twice a month, but I still have a lot of development. And I think in terms of the work that we need to do, being able to have an outside company to come in and to help us be more competitive in this market to increase enrollment, especially in schools where the school enrollment is not where it needs to be, but the school is actually outperforming competitors, we just have to be able to be more strategic in that area.
And to add on to that, Ms. Ford, you know, we, we have high expectations for what an increase in applications looks like, what an increase in enrollment looks like, and what increased engagement looks like. And so again, for context, adding a partner in this kind of work to provide that outside lens and that outside expertise is another suite in our arsenal. And it was a request from the board, as we built our budget this year, that we looked at an outside firm for partnership.
Dr. Jones?
Thanks, Ms. Waite. I, I just had a question, and it mirrors something that I asked last time this contract was brought up. And I just, you know, when I think about the current compos, composition of our student population, and I know, I, I think African-American population is around seventy percent, or sixty and seventy percent. And I think about, I saw a lot of expertise that were presented to us on outreach to the Hispanic community, different activities, and, and how those things led to, like, tangible increases, to, I think, my colleague's point of, people went to a game, people started following soccer, people started doing this. And so when I think about some of the expertise that were presented, I do still have questions around what expertise this firm could have when it comes to promoting our school district to an African-American population, in addition to the other diverse groups that we have. And I just wondered if they had brought more today.
Sure. So I am actually going to invite Cece Rojas and her team to come up and help answer some of those, some of those specific questions. But one thing I want to address right up front regarding that, Dr. Jones, is that we very much understand that a marketing strategy at a high level must include all of the students that we serve. And so there's not a neglect to certain segments, but there is also certain highlights. When we look at where enrollment is increasing in different segments and demographics, it's certainly part of the suite and part of the strategy, but not at the expense of neglecting any of our students. And so Cece, do you want to come up as well and answer any questions regarding that? All right. We'll let her, and if you have any more questions up for that, yes.
Well, good evening, everyone. Thank you very much for having us here today. Yeah, so, absolutely. So I think that we've been, we have proven our marketing expertise and that we've been able to increase engagement and numbers across many platforms, including many and all multicultural markets. Personally, I spent many times, many years working for Truman Medical Center as the chief community engagement officer, and, you know, that was, the African-American community was a majority of our, of our population. So we had to figure out how to continue to work in that community, enhance what we were doing, amplify, continue to make progress, and then, of course, set target, then start targeting, though, all the other communities that were quickly, quickly growing in our community that represented, one, how we could better serve and create better healthcare services for them, not only them, but to the, but also the growing population. So I think that, you know, we have much expertise in this particular arena. One of our other, a couple of our other clients, just notable would be the Kansas City Missouri Health Department. That is a very multicultural environment that we were able to create great outcomes for, and the, particularly the HPV campaign, mask wearing, and then again with KCATA. And, you know, really digging down deep and understanding what will drive all those markets, and increasing market share, especially in the markets that you have identified and told us are important to you. I mean, you also want to be able to appeal to the fast-growing immigrant newcomer segments of our community that are also making choices, and how do we increase market share in those target markets?
Any other questions? No? Okay, thank you, Mr. Ramos.
Thank you.
Well, I would entertain a motion.
Well, I would entertain a motion for the Tico Productions contract.
Done, move.
Second.
All right, it's been moved and seconded. June, will you call the roll?
Mr. Abarkah?
No.
Ms. Buckner? Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford? No.
Ms. Woolsey?
No.
Mr. Hogan?
No. The motion has failed. All right, Dr. Baddell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the next item, we have the Quality Roofing Company. The administration is asking the board to take action on this contract to approve our quality roofing for partial replacements at Central High School. In the Board of Education building, the cost of three hundred seventy-nine thousand is available in the Capital Projects Fund budget. Quality Roofing is a one hundred percent M B E vendor.
Any questions? No? All right, I would entertain a motion for approval of the Quality Roofing contract.
Some of.
Second? Oops, sorry. Is there a second?
Second.
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Dr. Jones?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes. The motion passes. Dr. Baddell?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Our next item and final item is A I G Specialty Insurance Company. The administration requests ratification of the placement of our cyber liability insurance with A I G Specialty. The carrier is new to us this year, as our previous carrier is no longer offering cyber coverage to public schools. The cost of thirty-four thousand is available in the risk management operating budget.
All right, I would entertain a motion on the A I G Specialty Insurance Company contract.
Some of.
Second, sorry.
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yes.
Ms. Ford?
Yes.
Ms. Woolsey?
Yes.
Mr. Hogan?
Yes. All right, do we have a motion to approve the items on the consent agenda?
Some of.
Second.
Did, June, will you call the roll?
Mr. Abarkah?
Yes.
Ms. Buckner?
Yes.
Ms. Cortez?
Yep.
Yes.
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 Yes, the motion passes. All right, are there any other items of discussion tonight? Dr. Baddell?
No, sir.
All right, well, the meeting is adjourned. Thank you.